I think it's what grade it is now.
Yep.
But anyway, we'll get to that one. V and K.
He put on his grill today.
Well, he's been talking about it.
Apparently it was from race.
This is all really good.
You know, the other thing is probably in the office.
No.
So.
That was what he thought.
Yeah.
This thing was moving over every day in the state plan for a year.
Second tell.
He and my brother didn't buy the trigger.
And just.
Uh, forget.
Now, it's. Hi, Bob. How are you?
Such a proud.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. J. Nice people. Six. Okay. Yeah.
I'm gonna do a.
Long Reed playing. And um.
Yes.
Exactly. Everybody's getting excited. Yeah. I do. Oh, yeah. My man. My man.
Hi, Fred.
So did you look like someone?
Just for the team in general.
I look like someone.
So certain, certain pictures. You look like Randy from Alabama.
Who?
Randy from Alabama. Certain pictures.
Are you talking about Alabama, the state of just some guy named Randy?
A group that was really popular back in the eighties and nineties. Oh, Alabama.
Okay, so that's where you're going with it.
That is not what I said, Scott.
You said you look like Randy.
Randy Elone.
Yeah, it sounds like.
You know what?
You said.
I did say that.
So.
First time caller.
You, you look like, you look like Randy. I'm playing the odds. Every time I call.
First time caller. Say he's. He seems like Randy from Alabama.
That would sound really funny.
Lori.
We are ready. Let's go.
So, Sarah, are you ready?
Nobody on.
Shut this down.
Good evening. I've just called the second meeting from August from Hubbard City Council's order. And after the call to order, ask for approval of the agenda. Is there anything to that effect? Uh, second. Moving to second to approve the agenda as presented. Uh, all of President Marshall, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next part of the agenda is communications, public comments. If you wish to address the city council on any objects, any subjects pertaining to today's agenda, please wait until that item comes up on the agenda. Hopefully grab agendas from back in the room. And if you want to just make a public comment about anything that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do it at the microphone up here. I think we have Kent McAllie to start us off with that. Kent, introduce yourself, name, address. The conference room.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kent McAllie. I'm running for House District eighty-three, which consists of a lot of small towns, and this is one of them. So, uh, I live in Central City, fifty-eighteen Jayoka Avenue. And, uh, I really appreciate the opportunity to get these, uh, smaller town council meetings. I've been kind of hitting on quite a few of them, kind of figure out what the agendas are and, you know, issues. And what actually, uh, when it comes to funding, schooling, and everything else, you know, the problems that we're having in these smaller towns. So, uh, Tom has been a great host. I've been here quite a bit, quite often this summer, and, uh, just keep coming back because I really love the atmosphere that I've been, I've seeked here. So, uh, I'm definitely interested in knowing what heck's making these small towns, you know, keep going, and the issues they're having, especially when it comes to fundraising and getting funds from the state. So, I appreciate this opportunity to, uh, to trust myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, go ahead. Is anybody else here to speak for public comment section? Anybody recognize a couple that are just standing downstairs left? Are they here in the public?
They don't. They went the direction.
We're gonna move on and, um, if they come back for the public comment, I will let them butt in, I guess, with Doug.
I think they saw Doug.
Oh, probably.
Turn around.
I have that effect.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we've got three items on. Any questions? Or can we move forward?
Move, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Take the ball, is that second?
Second.
Ball, step. Move second to approve the consent agenda. All who favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Totally. Motion carries.
Which one?
Uh, starting with resolution to approve, I think our first action is to untable. Uh, are we ready to untable that? Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second. Move the second to untable, um, first resolution, and I think that's just a voice vote. All who favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Discussing, discussing eight-five twenty-two C, approving a twenty-eighty agreement with ten twelve adult for housing and nuisance of basement inspections. I don't remember why we tabled it, but there was good reason, I'm sure.
There were, uh, some, some changes that the attorney had suggested, and we are waiting for a clean copy of the proposed twenty-eighty. That has been received, and what you have is, is that clean version. But essentially what the staff is looking to do is we've had a defense where, um, our staff have entered a home and it's been, the interior's been unsafe, and we do not currently have the contract for inspections for that purpose. So, um, this will be the, the first step to get Lincoln County Public Health involved, and then they can do those inspections. I could count on one hand how many times they'll probably use this, and of course, the tenure period just happens to be kind of a reaction basis right now, so.
Who does the inspection? Is it the county? Is that near Lincoln?
Correct.
Okay. Lincoln County Hall.
Is that effective date is highlighted? Why is this that?
Uh, only because we didn't know, um, it's effective. It would, if you adopt the resolution tonight, the effective date would be when the county board's supervisors' number is as well.
Okay.
I think, uh, I think Steph is referring to in five, it's showing me in effect until June thirty, and there isn't a year.
Oh.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll actually remain in effect for probably, um, usually their five years. But it just depends on if the county's okay if they want to do this on that one-year period and then have a renewal or a, to extend it for the whole five years.
So you're willing to be flexible based on what the county?
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
And the rest of that paragraph is all about ways that everybody can pull out.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
They're more like, we only pay the fee if and when we use their services. It's not so, we get paid annually for less just to be, uh, that's why.
And it's not a light fee sometimes, for example, we use it.
And it's important, I think, since we don't have the function to do this, that we've put some option in place, so. So with that, unless there are other questions concerning, I do approve of the resolution eight twenty-two C, approving twenty-eighty between the county and the nuisance of basement inspections.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll say. Steph Mark. Move the second to move forward eight-five twenty-two C, and that is a, we'll call so. Marshall, who's ready?
West, Hes, Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Move eleven-eighteen twenty-two A, rejecting award for all construction bids for the LBC generator project. I think we have some explanation about that in our notes, but anything further to add?
No, the bid came in two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars above the engineer's estimate. I did have a chance to talk today, because being a, um, they were on vacation. Three or four of the contractors that had planned to bid on the project went on vacation and just decided not to bid.
I know estimators is a very specialized position in these companies, but, uh, though that it falls on weeks that we happen to be putting out the bids here.
Yeah.
I think it's worthwhile, and do you have to make some adjustments to, uh?
They are gonna make some minor modifications to the connection, uh, that came out of the conversations with some of the contractors that didn't bid on it. It's just a clarification. So, yeah, there'll be minor modifications just in that specific area, and then they'll re-bid the project, we'll have to adopt a resolution, set a date, doing all that over again, so, um, there's a, let's say, a better than fifty-fifty chance that we'll, we'll bid it out this fall, and it may not be completed until spring.
I think we waited a few years on this, but I'm not surprised.
So it's a quarter million?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll move to approve resol- resolution eight-nineteen twenty-two A to reject the award of all construction bids for the LBC generator project.
Second, that. So move the second to approve the resolution of rejection here, and Marshall, that is also a vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West? Yes. Engel?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Moving to motions for approval, the claims list, I think Marshall sent out a couple this afternoon. Question the staff about that claims list?
So we hired the city, Marion, to paint our streets?
Mm-hmm. So, um, we have, actually, for a while, uh, they have the equipment. So, Mar- I will, Marion not only paints our streets, but they also, uh, help us manage the, the intersection lights, traffic lights, and so.
That's right.
We hope to, in the future, kind of curb that a little bit. We're, we're getting more knowledge on the streetlight stuff, and I would, personally, I would like to take the paint and the lines back in the house. Not sure how to finagle our painter onto something to make that work a little more streamlined for us, but, but there's, the, the prices keep rising every year.
We can't use the robot that does the field.
Yeah, we can't. We talked about it.
This is the first time, I may admit it, but this is the first time I've seen, uh, painting the streets, so we obviously don't do it every year.
Yeah, we do.
You do it every year, it's like, we missed it.
Yep, yep.
And do we, does Marion also do, like, the parking lines sometimes?
We do the parking lines and, uh, crosswalks, stop bars, that, that sort of stuff.
I would move to approve the claims list.
Second. Did you want to point out real quick before you take it out, the reason that you probably never paid too close attention to it is until we have business thirty, and that's striking, the bill is far less than what it is today. But taking on business thirty and, um, do you mind a couple more hours there? Increase it.
Looks like we're gonna have to beat those layers.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor to approve the claims list. If there's no further questions or comments, all who favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of being key invoice on Third and Fourth Streets, no question, construction project.
Uh, the next four invoices are all for projects that we've already approved. The invoices vary from just over forty thousand to, I think, the smallest one, about eighty-four hundred.
Do these need to be?
You have to, you vote on each individual. They're separate projects, so.
No further questions?
Yeah, with that, I would move approval of invoice number five-one-three-five-seven-dash-three in an amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second to approve the first one. I don't know if there are any invoices. If we're ready to vote on that, all who favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next being key invoice, I have a one reconstruction project. More discussion needed or questions?
As it was pre-approved, I will move to approve the V and K invoice of, um, number five-one-three-six-one dash two. The number one reconstruction project totaled forty thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Thank you, Stephanie. First second. Okay. Stephanie Mark. Move second to move forward, the V and K invoice five-one-three-six-one. Ready to vote on that? All who favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next invoice, twenty-two center sewer rehab project. Council action as needed.
Move approval of that one, invoice number five-one-three-six-two-dash-two, totaling nine thousand thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second? Second, any? Great. Any further explanation on that? To add? Okay. Moving forward on that motion, if you're ready to vote on it, all who favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of invoice on the Port-au-Prince salt shed project.
I'd move, true move. Invoice number five-one-three-six-seven-dash-two, amount of eight thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second. Second. Move second to move forward to the V and K invoice on the Port-au-Prince salt shed, and if you're ready to vote on that, all who favor that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item J six, is discussion consideration of future art allocations for the Sculpture Trail. Council action is needed. I think we've got Bob Campana from the Arts Council there at the.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, yes. Welcome.
He wears many hats.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council, Bob Campana, eight-three-five-fifteenth, uh, New South West, Mount Vernon. And I, um, come to you as chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and also as a member of the Sculpture Trail Committee, which is the net book gathering of a combination of people from the Arts Council, independent people in the Parks and Rec Commission. So we have a lot of voices behind us. What, what we're faced with here is the extension, the continuation of the Sculpture Trail that extends between First and Third Streets along the Hon Creek. And at our Parks and Rec meeting of last week, our board voted unanimously to offer this hopefully acceptable approval, proof proposal of future funding. Since the, um, lost language, the lost tax language, was clarified to allow for parks and trails, and that opened up funding for projects such as the Sculpture Trail, the proposal is this, that, um, the council approve our recommendation to have the sum of ten thousand dollars approved every other year. And the Sculpture Trail Committee is actively working on private fundraising, which is coming. Plus, we're getting really good sculptures and really good donations from artists. In our first year, last year, we had four sculptures, uh, that began the trail, a total of sixteen thousand dollars. This year, we have, uh, the Dragonfly, the Stainless Steel Dragonfly. If you haven't seen it, go see it on, along the trail, and that was from a Kansas City artist, plus our local artist, Dave Riga, is donating a piece and selling a piece for fifteen hundred dollars. So by the time we're done, we will have, um, seven sculptures in this stretch. The city crew led by Eldon and, and with Matt's support through the Parks and Rec Commission as director, we have, I feel sailed through this very smoothly, and what we've created is something that is, as you saw last year in the Cedar Rapids Gazette, Mount Vernon was highly publicized, and then the purpose of extending trails, and all of a sudden, if, for example, if we can connect through Lincoln County to Cedar Rapids, it gives another reason for people to come to Mount Vernon, not only for the aesthetics of the sculpture, but also it's really an economic development opportunity that brings people to town. We don't have a specific study, but the purpose of it, of course, is to help bolster the downtown restaurants and, and other businesses just by bringing people here to see the unique sculptures that we have. So that's, that's basically why I'm speaking, is we know that as a park and rec commission, that we have the money through the loss, but ultimately is your council's support and to approve something that will alternate every other year. You generously gave us ten thousand dollars a year ago, which seeded the trail. This year, um, we relied on other sources, so we're asking to start in the next year and alternate years so that it doesn't drain the coffers, but also shows the community's support for our artistic and aesthetic venture that we're creating down along that section in nature park. So, anyway, that's, matter of my missing anything?
No, you hit it. Yeah, just to let you know that, um, the proposal, the recommendation was to go until Lost sunsets, until two thousand and thirty-four.
Yeah. Not for everything, it's just that Contujo and the world of the lost funding which it leaves in another ten years, so. So, we approved ten thousand for the first installation.
Yes.
And then, didn't we just approve ten thousand again?
That's my memory as well.
Yes.
So we've already allocated twenty thousand. And, and that.
That would be the first, the first installment of the fifty that you're requesting.
Yes. Yeah. So, so we've already spent without city council money for the current year, so we're looking at next year, and. But that's already been allocated by the city. Okay.
Yeah, for, for the fiscal year that, that we're in right now, um, I think we have versus not.
Okay. Okay. So, um, my, my next question is, um, you, you're doing private fundraising? Yes. Do you have any financials to provide us with what that funding consists of in terms of, over the same period of time, that we, you're asking us to appropriate funds for, for that? At, at the moment, the financials for private fundraising really is being organized the art, by the Arts Council, and I know of, of individuals that I can't say yet who actually want to purchase a piece for the trail itself outright. So the answer is no. I don't have the hard number of, of dollars, if that's what you're asking. That's what I'm asking. Yeah. I, I, I do know of individuals who, a year ago, gave five hundred dollars a piece privately, and those same individuals want to give more, and the specific dollar, I don't, I can't tell you that yet.
Well, if I may, but that Mount Vernon Area Arts Council has committed dollars.
Yes.
Do you remember the dollar amounts?
Mount Vernon, the Area Arts Council, uh, committed five thousand dollars, plus they, wrote a grant which was approved, and the State, uh, Arts Council Department of Cultural Affairs sent ten thousand dollars to the city. So, it's the, the support from the city council plays into us getting grants from elsewhere. So, it's a partnership and not a sole sailing opportunity.
Well, and I think, wasn't it Murray that came last time to ask about that, the funding? And she did mention that that was sort of seed money for other grant money when we approved it. I'm just curious to know why the long-term commitment? What's the advantage of you asking for that right now?
Basically, uh, what the advantage is that I see is that it provides a support, a community's support for private fundraising and for grant writing. And the long-term commitment, um, is also, as was stated, it's not a for everything, it's running the course of the, of the lost funding, and it also ultimately is, is a minor fraction of the total money of the lost, uh, funding that's there. So, and, and also, this is politics, and, and hoping is true, but, but having this money for the Sculpture Trail leaves a lot of money for extension of the trails, for example, to go to Cedar Rapids, and we're looking to make Mount Vernon have a reason to connect to the, the larger county trail system, and also to, to bring in the tourism and economic advantage locally. So that, I know I've had specific answers, but that's, those are the reasons that come to mind. And, and also, just as a, a, um, consideration, right at the moment, the Sculpture Trail Committee has the specific area along the Hon Creek Trail and, and with adjacent areas to keep the, the sculpture park consolidated, and then it becomes an opportunity to, also to rotate sculptures. None has to be there forever, and if, if the city or the Arts Council sells off a sculpture and replaces it, that's, that also is another way of keeping things fresh and moving, but, um.
I continue to be supportive of this and have in the previous discussions that we've had and votes on council. When I was reading through this, uh, what came to my mind was, why ten thousand? Uh, I know there's precedent because we did that twice, but you've already indicated that some of these sculptures are far left, so maybe far more than that. And so, if we were to vote on something that was long-term like this, could there be language that would say, um, each year the city council will approve, uh, depending on the cost of the sculpture, up to ten thousand dollars, but if the sculpture is fifteen hundred? And, 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 and that's me thinking, well, we're only gonna do probably one a year, and maybe you and your vision and Parks and Rec are thinking, no, no, we'll, we may do ten a year.
The, the specifics of this year's installation is that the Hon Creek Dragonfly was fifteen thousand dollars, and the ten thousand plus the five thousand, ten thousand from the city or the state, plus the five thousand annual from the Arts Council and their private fundraising, gives the Sculpture Committee a goal to offer a call for entry to say, we have fifteen thousand, what can we get for fifteen thousand? As it turned out, our, our local sculptor, Dave Riga, um, we were hoping to get some of his, and he's offering to donate one, and then the other one is a fifteen hundred dollar, which the Arts Council is privately paying for. So, bas- basically, it's, we're, we're getting some goodwill from artists, because last year, for example, uh, both artists that contributed their pieces took far less than the original asking price, and then we raised another thousand dollars, so we got sixteen thousand dollars where the pieces, like, from, um, the, the girl hawk, for example, that was fifteen thousand alone, but the sculptor, who, I have to say, is a longtime friend of mine, he didn't want to be left out of this for price. So, how that worked, price-wise, is I drove to Colorado and physically brought his sculpture back, so that saved that cost, and, you know, we all just pieced together to make that. And the, the Dubuque sculptor, she had the trio of dancers, and her trio started, I believe, at, um, about fourteen thousand, and then we got those for eight thousand. And so, we're, it's just things on hand and, and working and negotiating, but we have to know what we have to negotiate. We, we can't say, oh, we have forty thousand, when we don't. We just have to have a firm number, and that's all.
And I think, too, you mentioned it in Stephanie's report, um, and we've all been here where we had to, we were voting not to spend the money today, but to commit to spending that money if a grant came in that matched. And, and, and there are, to your point about, a lot of grants where they want to see some skin and game from the local entity. And, and I think, while I can appreciate where you're headed here, I think putting that caveat negates that opportunity for, for Parks and Rec and for the Arts Council, to say that, you know, it has to then be re-approved, um, puts one more, one more step in the process.
I would view that a little bit differently in that if, if we're willing to save an up-to amount, what, what's the difference between committing an up-to amount versus an exact amount? amount in the eyes of whomever is then?
Does the application still read $10,000?
Right. Whether we say up to $10,000 or we say $10,000?
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not a grant writer, so let me qualify my response. But if I am looking at who to award a grant to, and one organization has already committed $10,000 to it, and one has to still be voted on, even though it was voted on once and it says up to?
That's not what it, what it would be is we approve up to $10,000, so there would not need to be a second vote, because we've approved up to.
I misunderstand the intent. I assumed that it would then leave it to the next council to approve each year.
It's just like when we buy a police car. We approve an up to amount.
I see what you're saying.
But to clarify, there's some truth to both of that. So if you took a vote on a request tonight to allocate $10,000 every other year until the end of this year, 2034, it's nothing more than a symbolic vote. You cannot take a vote tonight to basically guarantee.
Spend future money.
Future dollars and future.
So every other year, the council would still need to vote?
Yeah. You would, in order for you to allocate, what's the amount's to about $50,000, people would think, take every other year $10,000. So you would have to take $10,000, or you would have to take the entire 50. You as the council would have to vote tonight to take an entire 50 and transfer those funds to the arts council out of Lost on this allocation is the only way that you are going to guarantee these funds in the future.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So whatever you vote on for an allocation in any given fiscal year is all you can do. So next year, if there's a new election and that council comes on board, they do not have to guarantee that $10,000 allocation.
So whether we include up to or not, this is, for the most part, it's a symbolic gesture of commitment moving forward.
Yes.
But we're not beholden to.
Now, the only way that you can hold future councils to these allocations, if you were to borrow funds, and then you would have to pay tax to repay those dollars. This isn't a thousand dollar, you would do that, but so when councils borrow money over a 10, 15-year period, you've essentially spoken for future councils, if this money was borrowed for this purpose and they have to in years and that, right? Taking a vote tonight and saying, yeah, well, this council will allocate $10,000 dollars every other year until 2034 is only as good as this fiscal year.
So if we approve this, would that technically, that first payment would be what, July of 2025 with the new fiscal? Because haven't we already paid during this fiscal year?
Which means we would have to vote on it again.
We'd have to vote on it regardless whether it was '25 or '26.
Right.
Or you can, you can call it what it is and say that this is a $50,000 ask, agree to the $50,000, and that money is transferred and then is accounted for. But otherwise, no, like I said, no vote on future lost money is going to, will tie future councils to this.
So in an effort to try to save time and get this taken care of for Parks and Rec and the arts council, it sounds like it's really not going to do that. It will be symbolic. You'll still have to come every year, present your case, the council, however it's made up, will have to make a decision.
What's the will of the board as far as a motion and moving forward here? I mean, the ask for Parks and Rec is to get $10,000 in alternate years from the lost fund for a total of $50,000 up to 2034.
One last thing, and that is just for absolute clarification of my mind. For the fiscal year 2024, '25, this council has already approved $10,000. That's, we did $10,000 the first year, the second year, the city didn't buck up. It was all, as Bob explained, through donations, and then it came back to us, and that's when we got the clarification on the rule of Lost.
I mean, technically speaking, you took the vote on that in fiscal year '24.
Yes, but it was for '24, '25.
Yeah, I mean, so the money would transfer, they'll get the $10,000 that you already approved. So it doesn't really matter when you start this, it's about 50.
Is either going to be 40 or 50 depending on whether we do 25, 27, 29, 31, 33?
I need to actually go back to, you don't understand, you know, when you said, yes, Sculpture Trail is a small part of, you know, of the lost funding essentially, but we have a lot of other parks that are going to need major work. And I still hear, at least once a week, you know, needing the bike trail. And that is just much more important to, and the people I've spoken with too, and I think we need to kind of focus on different things like that at this time. If I hear a lot of difference, I don't really hear people asking for more sculptures. Granted, that doesn't mean that's necessarily true, but I just have a harder time allocating for 10 years for this. And how much do we give arts council each year? Just curious.
$1.
$25, $25.
Yeah, I think it was like 55 or something.
Yeah.
Hundred.
Yeah. So where I struggle is that there's no hard planning in place in terms of solid funding outside of what we're providing on an annual basis. I certainly wouldn't support allocating $50,000 tonight to be transferred. I, it's well-known fact that I struggle with spending the lost funding on this as it is with all of the other items in parks and recreation that can occur. But it's, I struggle with a lack of a plan beyond, we're working on it. I think that going on a every-two-year basis, having it come forward and working on a grant toward that is, I'm more comfortable with that today than I was when this first came forward. And I think for this council to go beyond that precedent that has been set and place that burden on other councils in the future for this, it's, is not the way forward. I think what we've been doing has been working. I do think that the Sculpture Trail is a nice feature. I struggle, as you said, there's no study to count the economic benefit that it brings, whereas we can count the number of ballgames that occur in town, number of families that come to town, and you can do some whiteboard math with that. We can also go to a community like Elyan, we could say, before the trail was completed to Elyan, what were your businesses doing? What are they doing today? I think it's a stretch to do a long-term commitment. I also am struggling to see how many sculptures in that area make sense based upon their size, their color. Much like Marcus has mentioned about some of the things, I love the dancers. I've heard other people that say they don't belong in a nature area. Not my opinion, I love them, I think it's the right place for them. Wouldn't put them in nature park, but where they are, they're beautiful. And so that's, that's where I would not, I would not support.
I know an artist that put a ballerina in a pigsty. A long time ago, but. I know of laying the arts council or Parks and Rec for asking for a finer commitment. But because it is symbolic in nature, and because we've already approved $10,000, it's on the table for you to spend and to use as leverage as you develop a grant. I am not going to support the five-year, but I want to finish by just saying this, it isn't always about the money that is brought in, of course. And there are always going to be other projects. And if we believe that it's important for the city of Mount Vernon, it will fund those projects. But I do go back to the importance of helping to shape the culture of the community. And so if this council's, in my view, job is to establish vision, establish finance to live into that vision and to help manage the culture of Mount Vernon, and that's how I see this job, having a sculpture garden helps promote and shape culture of the community itself.
Councilman Turler, I'd like to address the comment about the lack of long-range planning. First off, we as a Park and Rec board are volunteers, and what we have under my leadership on the board, we're trying to not be reactionary, but we're trying to be visionary in establishing a 10-year plan that's part of the visionary part of it. The other partner with, well, at Parks and Rec, we control the land, the other partner is the arts council and the funding. And I really, I'm not a member of the arts council, even though I wrote the founding papers of it. I do encourage, and I would encourage Murray DeVries, our representative, to come here and talk about their funding plans, because I can't speak to that. So it isn't like it's willy-nilly, but it's just different sources. And we have, we don't intend to flood, we, as a committee, we intend to place well with distance and aesthetics when the sculptures come in, and we have put together a great call for entry that describes the environment, and artists have really paid attention to it. And the Han Creek Dragonfly is a response from a Kansas City artist that really studied this place and it made it fit. So I'd like to just say that we're trying to be visionary and the proper thing to do is to come to the council, because we, as a Park and Rec, even though we have all this money that's through the lost, we can't spend a nickel without you guys saying it. I wish we had independent power to do it, but we don't, so we have to collaborate. So has the Park and Rec board recently revisited the trail study? The trail study is included, I believe, in the master plan and everything, so yes, we're revisiting it, but what's the question that comes out of that? Is that in terms of what we need in town or what to connect the town or what? Yeah, go ahead. Safe routes to schools, that, you know, there was a lot of effort. We got a beautiful trail along Third Street Southeast, along nature park that then goes up and connects with Fourth Street where we have the school crossing, which was a great project. But I've not seen any, any other activity related to that study since it was done. The, I mean, there's a lot of trail potential pending. For example, going through nature park past the dog park and south of the highway, but that's contingent on how to cross the highway and what costs, that's one area. Second area is the evolution of the Park and Stonebrook neighborhood and the trail system there. And all of this is being factored into how we consider, what we ask for, what we envision. So those, those are before us. Crossing from the Northeast Quadrant to Davis Park across Highway 1 is another consideration. We look at how to do that with the state highway controls that access to. So yeah, I'd like to believe we're trying to be cognizant of the overall trail system, and again, we're overall, like everything you do is budget and what you can get the best way to book, and we're trying to look and pay attention to that too.
Thank you.
I can read presentation, Bob, and your comments, and for the good discussion here at the board table, council table. I don't know if there are any other observations, but I think we're at a juncture to decide what we want to do or what we don't want to do. And where are we at on that? Anybody want to start us out?
Well, since it's in front of us, I feel like we do need to take action on it. So with that in mind, I would move approval of the officially recommending $10,000 be allocated every year for the trail along the Sculpture Garden to sunset with the lost funds in 2034.
What's my stat? Is there a second? Second? I think I'm correct. Did you catch the details of the motion? You think commercial?
So does staff recommend moving forward with this?
Well, I think, I mean, as far as a recommendation goes, I just want everybody to personally even if you vote on this and it's approved, it's symbolic. So what they can do is put this allocation every other year into the CIP, which is a five-year plan. But there's no, I mean, I want everybody to understand there's no money being allocated tonight. You just can't, not taking on any debt, not required to vote. So if you want, if you give them a symbolic vote, that would be fine, but you still have to come back and then add the next request. So if the $10,000, if we did it in fiscal year '26, '27, you still have to vote, and it's going to be subject to the council sitting there at the time.
Yeah, and I would like to clarify, Councilman Roses', statement that it's in front of us and you feel like we have to take some action. We actually have the option to take no action, just as a point of order. But we have a motion in front of us, and I'll leave it up to the mayor to do this part.
I'll say one more thing?
Any other discussion? Okay, yes.
And I just wanted to, it'd be helpful to me to see the breakdown in, you know, some just, you know, allocated, you know, asked for allocation for this. I just haven't seen a, you know, heard any breakdowns of, you know, say, you know, Elliott Park or Davis Park, how that all plays in as well, because those are all parts apart. Parks and trails also, and very important parts, just as every park and trail is. And I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on some things and improvement there, so I just haven't seen anything like that either, I suppose, you know, for possible study.
Yeah, go ahead. Sounds like a recommendation to the Parks and Rec board to engage in a study of comments or use of the specific sculpture trails. Would that be an accurate interpretation?
Just, yeah, and overall, yeah, just overall, I guess, Parks and Rec, yeah, the whole, the whole campaign.
Okay. Okay. Oh, is I confused, Mark? What is it you're asking for?
Well, in, Bob said that, you know, in referencing that the, you know, the $10,000 is a small part of Lost.
You want to see?
Sculpture Trail is a small part, very small part of Lost also. So I want to see what.
You want to see like a plan of what we want to utilize Lost for?
Right.
Is everything, okay, yeah.
Essentially what the CIP is. That's essentially what the CIP is.
Yeah, we plan on presenting that.
You see that every year.
At the budget time. Chris has some information for the CIP that we've proposed. It's not ready for council yet, but it's, it's in there for, it has trails, it has some park amenities, it has some other things inside of that, trail lighting and other things. So I think, again, like Mr. Turler stated, you do not have to make a motion tonight. If there's other information that you're seeking, you can surely provide that. I have some information I can share with you as soon as today or tomorrow or next day in regards to what Park and Rec board has approved or looked at for the CIP for the following year, July 1, 2025. If that would be helpful for, for at least Councilman DeReese and anybody else that we need that, so we can provide that.
Thank you for the offer. I think we're going to hold up on it tonight.
Okay.
And so a motion on the floor, and correct me if I've got all the details right, but it's for $10,000 allocation out of the loss fund for every other year for trail art to 2034. Are we missing any components there, aren't you? Okay with that?
That will have to be voted on every time, every other year.
I think that language needs to go in there because this is a symbolic voting.
Right.
Add that component about voting on every other year.
I agree. I think what they're doing is great and I really appreciate all of the efforts, but I think, you know, I don't want to make a commitment to a future council and I'm glad that they'll have the opportunity to do that. So this is just putting a spot into the CIP for the $10,000 line item allocation, which I think the right thing to do and the future councils can decide on.
Yeah, Craig, this is your motion. Are you okay with that fifth?
Yep.
Fifth item there voting. Okay. If you understand the motion, yeah, Marshall's got it, two minutes there, so ready to vote on it. All of them who have supported the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same thing?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got three, two in support of that motion. I don't have the opportunity to weigh in here, but I'm done.
Thank you, Council.
J seven, discussion consideration of J E O invoice on the downtown, city uptown street state project, I think, yeah. Anything to add there?
No, she doesn't.
Depends on who's right and who's wrong.
Depends on who's normal and who's not.
For the tenants of the last event, first three building. I've moved to approve J E O invoice number 153225.
Second?
Second, can you report for J E O invoice 153225? And then over the question.
Before, before we went on, then just, just a comment. I really appreciated from J E O, the calendar, the updates, the just checking them, you know, there's often when we enter into these sorts of agreements that it happens and then all this time, then we get an update, then all this time, and then we, you know, and sort of just to feel like the progress is being made and, and to see what the next ones are, that, that we haven't quite gotten to yet, but we know that it just, that you could, I just really appreciate that. So anyway, just a comment.
Yeah, they've done an excellent job of, like, key word in the morning and providing con voices that tells exactly where they're at, so.
Have motion on the floor to approve the, uh, mentioned invoice. Ready to vote on that? All care of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports, Department of Labor and Police report, Chief Shannon has contributed a report. Anything to add, Chief?
One thing I would add is just a reminder to the public that the school will be starting very soon and so big yellow buses will be traveling and kids will be walking and we already get enough complaints about speeds and stop signs that we would like some public support to make sure our community is safe that way, so.
Pattern will change. Eldon Public Works report, got sent to us, I believe. How much more on there?
Sorry for the.
Lots of pictures.
Lots of pictures.
A picture is worth a thousand words.
This is the wall.
Well, I would, I would, and we've said it a dozen times, that I would echo what you mentioned in there, with Jane and the work that she and her crew have done in the, in the parks and with the baskets.
I often don't say enough about them. They do such a great job.
You know, Craig mentioned, you know, one of our jobs being to maintain and build the culture of the town, and I think that plays a big part, just when you drive in and you see that, that we're taking care of those little things, it just, it sets a tone and it, she does an excellent job, so.
And Ted's actually made a big difference with that as well. He's pretty.
The guy are my choice.
Yeah, he's big.
Love the transitions, you lose your summer workers too here.
Yep, as of today, actually. Lost everybody except for one.
Can you remind me what kind of tree that was that, I don't know, said my neighbor that I can't remember.
Over here, that was a big maple.
The big maple, yes.
I believe it was a silver maple, but yeah, it was a big maple, huge. Huge.
And, and so you're aware, we, we've made the decision to take that down, given the size of those two leaders. We just figured that it was no longer balanced and leaving, leaving leader that was about the same size as the one that, that came off. Probably would be prudent.
The crotches in those leaders also were, were starting to get a lot of rot, so it was, it was inevitable and it's, and it's a maple, so, which, yeah.
So we, we discuss trees notionally amongst, I know I've had discussions with Eldon and Chris, and I, I think it's important to, to point out for the record that I think there is something to be said that we are still seeing the impact of the 2020 duration. Because, you know, you, an event like that happens and goes on and you see the immediate damage, but it's, it's just like your body when you age and you go through something and, you know, your knee joint gets pounded in the pavement. And at some point, when there's additional stresses, those come out. And I think public needs to be aware of it. If, if you see issues in any of the, the public trees, let people know, City Hall, for example, that it's there, they can go evaluate it, they can take care of it. It's much better to do that in advance than after the fact. So I, I would encourage people to be aware of that, especially those that have the older soft maples and some of the larger, older trees in, in the older neighborhoods. And I, I will also, I would also like to say that Public Works continues to do an excellent job on, on cleanup when we have storms, on regular brush pickup. And I would remind the public that if you have winds that come down in a storm, in a storm, and it's the first week of the month and, and it's not a normal brush pickup week, if you have a friend with a pickup or you have a pickup or a trailer, you can take those out to the Public Works Department and, and dispose of those. You don't need to leave them on the side of the street for a month. And thanks for the continued good work.
Thank you.
Also Paul. Anything else for Eldon Public Report? Who's on the Parks and Rec?
Nothing to add if anybody has any questions.
Just would plug the addition of the disc golf equipment. That's a, that's a nice, nice add, so.
Cover add. Event Wednesday night, I like that a little bit.
Yeah, this Wednesday night is our back-to-school event. Probably have three to 400 people come through the door. Should be a fun and exciting night for all of us.
Well, I would also like to, you forget to happen in this past, but the, what am I talking about? The, the Fourth of July, no.
Heritage, yes, yes, thank you. Kickoff?
The kickoff and then the move to the, the football field with the, the drawing deal was just a ton of fun and, and well-run and, and parking, you mentioned, but nature of the beast, but well done on that as well.
Very popular, yeah. Cool library, Public Report. Grace is not here, but it's a pretty self-explanatory thing.
Great presentation.
Reports, Mayor, Council, Ministers. I'm going to check out the Cornell Library this month, this quarter's Midwest Living Magazine, I guess, Mount Vernon is.
Featured.
Featured in there and I don't know if that's the place I've heard about the, the miracles on Main Street and on First Street. More than Mayor Fairfax staff to talk to the Pulpies, the people who live there about noticing them the last several years when they come into town. So it's a design feature now of Mount Vernon, so they'll have to keep doing that. That was number one. Second thing was invite everybody to a groundbreaking on Wednesday at 1:00 PM at Cottonwood Apartments. Is that correct? Is that Wednesday? Hard hats will be provided. Well, I don't know about that.
Will there be a gold shovel?
That's another thing that.
CHI. CHI said they didn't take care of. Eldon, you got a shovel.
I got a straight shovel.
I've done that before.
Shovel with my down. I noticed that they have not, they have not waited for the groundbreaking.
No.
This is purely, they're just pleased to have you, right? So don't, don't, don't.
Shovel.
But that is, that's Wednesday. Thursday at 1:00, this is not a groundbreaking, but it's the initial, the inaugural check presentation for the Mount Vernon Community Development Group. But that board decided to contribute, make a contribution, this is from the Gartner's Fund, to the Mount Vernon Elementary School Kids in Need Program. So that's going to happen, hopefully a good presentation, Thursday at 1:00. For that, that's a check, check distribution. And the fourth thing is something that's been kind of discussed here, interurban trail. Last Friday, went along with Dennis Jordan from Alliant and Dennis Gomat, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing his name correctly, from Lynn County, head of Lynn County Conservation. We went in his vehicle for two and a half hours and literally went the trail, interurban trail, saw good points and bad points of the opening of that trail, recognized that there are three landowners that will have to die before we'll get access to their sites. There are four smaller tracts that are owned by IPL, the Iowa Power and Light, and they, I think the term is a quiet title, they're in the process of doing a quiet title process for those. I mentioned that we are beginning our first three-year cycle to kind of work on our, and the, the city of Bertram is adamantly against it. So I was, at one point I was a little disappointed with how the trip went, but you can only control what we can control, and this end we can control, you know, how the Irish flame eventually may be. And the, the easier sections to open up on that trail are the next three or four miles. So this may be four miles of turnaround until there's not pressure to continue the rest of it. We may have to go work around on the second box end of the trail, may need to loop around the sewer plant, Cedar Rapids, and getting under 13 and getting over water, might be a river, I guess, maybe a stream, but.
Big creek.
It's, it's a big creek, big creek, okay. By Bertram is going to be an issue. One way is to go through Bertram and build a million-dollar bridge, but if a community that doesn't want it, I'm not sure. We're going to try to bypass that, but.
Get a bridge one way or the other.
The discussion's out there, it's being talked about more and more, and we'll see what happens there, but.
Well, thanks for staying on.
Well, a lot of people want it and putting up pressure and every time I see Mayor O'Donnell and Councilman Van Orne from Cedar Rapids, they're two that are very interested in, too. On their end, of course, they announced, we have the smaller section, but.
Tell you what, every time I go to Ely, I am so impressed by how much traffic is coming through there and how much business their local businesses are getting because of it.
I got invited to the next, next street community development group meeting here in Mount Vernon from the economic development perspective, not the recreational perspective, that they want to know, what have you been doing tonight? Talking to a lot of people. And then Dennis volunteered as Lynn County staff to, to build up the grade where it's not at a needful grade right now and put, start putting rock on it. So that's, you know, it's not going to get paved tomorrow, but at least that's some start to the trail, so maybe what could start running out there in another year or two. And it's also.
Not fair to people out there, she likes running the country.
We had a discussion about adding it, putting it alongside Mount Dillon up on the road. And Dennis was, both of her opposed to that because they, they want to back, back to the intrinsic recreational value of it along a highway versus going to the woods. It is, it is, that's woods back there and this is, you are out in the country.
I will enjoy it.
That, so they want to keep it true to the, to the quality of life.
Catherine and I will bike it together.
Okay.
Say go in pairs, please. Yeah.
Just to, to your point about if, if we get four miles out of Mount Vernon, if you look at the Grand Wood Trail connecting with Marion Trail, there is now the, the prep at, at on Seacrest Road just off the Springville Road. And it's a wonderful little trip to go up there, unload our bikes, ride into Marion and, and back out, you know, and if, if we can create an eight-mile ride for some people, that's all they need and it's a different piece of scenery. And, and your point to being off of the road versus when, when you're on that trail, you don't know traffic, it's just, it's just a gorgeous ride, straight into Marion. It's almost hotel on the other end.
It's, it's. They need to get back to, but it's. I agree. And the loop, not only north to Seacrest, but also south to Bass Farms, because there's interest there by some of the landowners in that direction, off of our four miles or something like that. And, and definitely interest by the Bass.
Sure, too.
So. Well, my four things. Any other council, committee, city minister, any report?
The only thing that I would add is that we had a reconstruction meeting today for this is 30 overlay. That project will get started on September 3rd. They are running it, even though it goes between both cities, they're running it as if it were one project, obviously, so. I, I will, I made this comment to the mayor before the meeting started, there will be disruptions in Mount Vernon, there will be some detouring that needs to happen because of the connection where we'll meet the roundabout. There is no way to essentially turn that into a one, one lane to allow traffic to go through to the left, to close that segment down. And discussion today was just to make sure that individuals that live along that road surface would just know that they couldn't get back to the roundabout, that they would have to detour around Seacrest.
Short-term pain for long-term pain. Forty days or so, I don't know. Anything else? Sorry. Your personal report, any thoughts that come to council? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. It was the forty days and just.